Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, can I ask everyone to make sure their cellphones are off, please? Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yeah, here.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Here.
Counselor Angeloni?
Here.
Counselor Caprio?
Here.
Counselor Diamond?
Here.
Counselor Esposito?
Here.
Counselor Fawnin?
Here.
Counselor Fucy?
Here.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 1st, 2013 WPCA Town Council meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Abstain.
Counselor Esposito?
Abstain.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Abstain.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the February 18th?
Oh, I abstain.
I abstain.
I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve the February 18th, 2014 Town Council minutes?
I'd like to move the minutes with two corrections on page five. The first one is regarding the motion for the auditorium. It should be the water filtration in the lobby instead of library. And the second one is on item 9A, under report from Chief Canelli hiring request. The lateral position does not require 10 years or less of experience. The 10 years came in the lieutenant, going to a lieutenant position. They had to have a minimum of 10 years' experience on the force.
I'll second it.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Abstain.
Counselor Fawnin?
Abstain.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Item 3, correspondence, citizen statements. Unfinished business, having none. New business, having none. Citizen statements and petitions, having none. Regular Town Council meeting. Reports of boards, committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, Economic Development Commission.
The Economic Development Commission met last night. Very good meeting with Alan Platus, professor from Yale's Design School, and along with Lawrence from AMS. And I think it's in your, you have a memo in the packet for you that outlines his presentation and Alan's comments as well. So, the commission is very optimistic and very excited because the information that's come back in the preliminary report of the market analysis says that that's a viable site. It's a viable site, and there's plenty of data to support that in terms of mixed use and, well, plenty of alternatives. So, he's confident that there will be developer or multiple developers, small scale, not your national developers, but more of a, you know, local or regional type of developers for a number of reasons I outlined in the memo. But, there's some, you know, opportunity there. So, now, it's, at this point, collecting more information, having the consultant talk with more people, and trying to figure out when the next charrette would be in terms of a follow-up. So, right now, it's behind the scenes, kind of collecting a lot of data. And as you know, one of the issues in terms of having a site plan is problematic at this point because of the state DOT work that they just completed in Route 80. And so, the elevations and contour lines are something we need to get, you know, where we can through DOT or some type of GIS. And, of course, that happens to be on your agenda tonight as well in terms of the council of governments looking for action with respect to, you know, support for the GIS application that's in your packet. So, the group is very optimistic, very pleased with the report. We should have the finishing touches on that hopefully by the end of the week or maybe a little while longer. But, we should have that soon. So, I'd like to bring that report probably for the next meeting. But, it was a good, overall, it was a very good meeting.
Have any of the stakeholders, like the owner of Central Plaza, replied to any of this yet? Or have any input?
I haven't. But, I think as part of the consultants' work that they're going to reach out, I think to make some contact and talk with not only owners there, but I think behind properties that abut the portion along 139.
Uh huh.
To, I mean, because one of the issues is access. So, they've got to try and look at any potential for access off of 139.
Have they done any values yet on the property? Item B, Permanent Project Building Committee?
Permanent project is meeting next Monday. But, I would like to make, just review the issue of the auditorium floor, just because there's some new members on the council and there's new members on the Board of Ed. So, I just wanted to review what has happened in the last year and a half or so. And during last fiscal year, the Board of Ed's Operation Committee held a number of walkthroughs of the schools, and they invited the town council to join them on these scheduled tours. Several council members went along on these tours, and there were two or three throughout school year. And, they were very insightful, especially when it came to the budget season. The Board of Ed included the repair of the auditorium lobby floor in their 2013-14 capital request. It was approved by the council, and it was passed in the budget referendum. At the February 6th Board of Ed Budget Workshop this year, there was discussion about the 2014-15 capital request, and it included several items that were already approved in the prior year's town's capital improvement plan. It was brought to the board's attention which items were already approved so they could make the adjustments on the final amount to be approved at the February board meeting. It has been past practice at all departments, including the Board of Ed, to follow their capital requests through the budget process and referendum so they are aware of what projects are moving forward. There is no official notification from the town. The departments discuss their approved project with the council, and the council decides who will manage the project, whether it's the council, the Permanent Project Building Committee, or the department itself. This project was discussed at the February Council Board of Ed Communication Committee meeting, and was then moved to the Permanent Project Building Committee at the next council meeting. We will look forward to having this issue corrected as soon as possible. And I'd also like to note that there have been times when the Permanent Project Building Committee has not met because of quorums. So, it's really important that all of the members that are appointed to the Permanent Project Building Committee attend the meeting so we have a quorum, and also to make sure that each of the respective parties make sure all of the slots are filled, and that includes alternates. So, it's really important that the members attend because what happens is the projects may get delayed if we don't have meetings because the Permanent Project Building Committee only meets once a month. So, if there's not a quorum and we're unable to meet, that will just delay things on there. So, it's really important to everyone appointed to not only that committee but any other committee, that if they can't make it, to let them know so we know if we have a quorum or not.
Okay. Thank you, Rose.
Just one other thing. You also have, by way of the Permanent Project Building Committee, this issue with the bathroom that came up before. I'm just giving you a FYI in terms of, you should have this in your folder, that internally staff has proceeded, done it, sketched it out, permitted it. So, it's going to go on to Permanent Project Building Committee for their next meeting next week, and hopefully we can get this, this thing built and done. And, you know, credit to the council for their fiscal oversight. It's probably going to come in, probably under what we would have paid for the architect. We hope. Keep our fingers crossed, and that would be a good thing.
Great. Okay. Item 8, Town Manager's Report. Item A, Town Policy on Disposition of Surplus Equipment.
Yeah, this was an item that you discussed at the last meeting and had some questions with respect to, you know, how the flow of information in terms of the policy and what you do, and having it essentially come back to the council so you're in the loop in terms of knowing. And so, you know, we had two vehicles there that we're looking at. So, I've provided you with a memo in terms of, you know, the research behind the process. And I, you know, I agree that I think it, you know, it makes sense to have, you know, this process follow through to the council to say, listen, this is, this is how it's shaping up, and this is what I've outlined for you with this, with respect to these two vehicles. So, in the case of Rescue 11, the final piece that remains to be determined is the value. And certainly, I think we need to have that piece, and we'll have somebody come out here mid-March, maybe 18th, 19th, or 20th, you know, to come out and look at that and ascertain, you know, once we have value, well, gee, okay, then how do you want to proceed? In the case of the request, it was to go to this, you know, accident reconstruction team that we participate in and get a benefit from but have not contributed to. So, I guess the question will be finding out value, and then finding out how much you want to contribute on Rescue 11. On the Special Hazards Unit, Public Works Director has requested that vehicle, and he is going to work out a, try to work out a trade, using that vehicle to work out a trade for other services, get some other things done within his department, which I think, I believe, interpret as permissible, and I think that should, that recommendation should be followed.
Now, this goes even further with other town assets, correct? That falls under the town manager. In other words, you know, like a filing cabinet or, you know, any other?
Right, pretty much any of the, right, surplus or obsolete type of equipment that, you know, we can try to, you know, repurpose or, you know, if somebody else needs it down the line, if there is any down-the-line user, we try to do that. If not, like computers, it just, they go off to, you know, be recycled. And we will have, you will see, and, you know, we've discussed in the budget process, the upgrade to the computer systems at Town Hall and servers will, will be in the budget for July 1st.
Okay. Item B, Myrma?
Yeah. I attended the meeting with Anthony Esposito last week on the 26th, and that memo is also, report is in your, in your packet with respect to the vote within the group to go to sell for the other company that's willing to buy them out in a loss portfolio transfer scenario. So, the numbers are there. The question was asked in terms of the council, I think through Joe, in terms of what, you know, assurances would the group have. And that the first response was that, that they're a big organization, and they are tied into, I think, the fifth largest in the, in the world. And, the second is that the Myrma has backstop insurance. And the third was that the state backstops that. That's the answer we got. Whether that holds true, and it never come back to us, he was, the gentleman representing the company was 99% sure. He wasn't going to go 100% sure that it wasn't ever going to come back to the group for, in terms of liability, if they go bankrupt. So, that's about as far as he would go when pressed on that, on that question.
So, I've seen your memo. It says here that the final numbers won't be available until mid to end of April. So, whatever is decide, whatever the sale price is in our contribution, would that affect current budget year, or is it something we can budget for next fiscal year?
Great question, and two answers. One, it's a worst-case scenario number that they believe will be improved favorably for the group membership, and that we specifically, the group specifically asked that the payment be after July 1st. Yeah, that's more of just an FYI. Felt that I had to do that at this point, given the, what was happening in terms of back-to-back-to-back storms coming through, the depletion in terms of salt within Public Works. But also, you've got to understand that the, the equipment is really, really banged up. You know, Fran is doing miracles, I think, and Barry and the rest of the crew to keep these vehicles on the road. But, the salt supply issue was expensive, very expensive. Still working on final numbers because it was, you know, working through, even anticipating, trying to get enough salt for what was to be a big storm for these past few days that never occurred. But, it's been a difficult, that, legal, and a few other items that were over expended on. That, I think it's prudent measure, in my mind, to institute a spending freeze at this point to approve so that we don't have any issues when we come to year end.
I just have one question. I know last year, and even when we had the interim town manager here, there was discussion at the council level in regards to the town's website and the posting of minutes. And I know it's concern of citizens also, that it's not up to date what has been done or what will be done to fix this problem.
We are working on it. That did come to my attention. So, the staff was instructed to get that done. It is in progress. I understood that today they got most, if not all, I think, I believe they got all of the town council minutes up to date, and then we'll be proceeding commission by commission, you know, board by board to get that updated.
So, is there a plan in place that this does not become an issue?
Oh, right.
Every couple months?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's been addressed, right. And clearly understood, there's no reason outside of the technology.
It shouldn't have been an issue in the first place.
Well, there's some technology issues, and that, we're also going to migrate to the new server and a new, new site and a new design. But, in the meantime, yeah, they'll be updated.
Okay. And I think, I know they're usually not posted, the minutes are usually not posted until they're approved, but I think we can have a section on our website, like the Board of Ed does, unapproved minutes, so they sit there until they are approved. Because I know some of the commissions, sometimes if they don't have the quorums and you can't approve the minutes because they don't have the right number of people or the right people aren't there to approve them, it could be months, just like tonight, we just approved October minutes.
Right.
But, I think we can have a section that says unapproved minutes, and they sit there until they get approved so that people can at least access them and see them.
Right, okay. Yeah, I think if you go on tonight, I think you'll see all of the town council minutes up there.
Okay, thank you.
Item 9, Community Events and Presentations. Tonight, item A, like to welcome the Girl Scouts this evening, and we have a proclamation. Tonight, whereas March 12th, 2014 marks the 102nd anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the USA, founded by Juliette Gordon-Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas, throughout its distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, character, and whereas, through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls develop the skills and lessons that will serve them a lifetime so that they may contribute to their communities. And whereas, Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities available to them today in math, science, sports, technology, and other fields that can expand their horizons. And whereas, more than 3 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 100 years of this American tradition, with nearly 50 million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Now, therefore, I, Anthony Candelora, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of North Branford, do hereby applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to support the leadership development of America's girls, and proudly proclaim the March 12th, 2014 as Girl Scouts Day. And we have this proclamation. We have another 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 proclamation. Whereas Audrey Shea Galogly and her husband moved to North Branford in 1954 to raise a family and take root in their new home. And whereas Audrey Shea Galogly became heavily involved with her new town, working with St. Augustine's Church and becoming the Democratic Register of Voters for North Branford. And whereas Audrey Shea Galogly also worked as a substitute teacher at the North Branford High School, and later served as Secretary to the Superintendent of Schools. She has always found time to stay connected to her Irish community, which on March 8th, 2014, will recognize her work and dedication with an appreciation award. Now, therefore, be it resolved that March 8th, 2014, shall hereby be known as the Audrey Shea Galogly Day in the town of North Branford, Connecticut. And on behalf of the town council, and by the powers granted to me by the town charter, I hereby congratulate Audrey Shea Galogly for her years of service to the community and to the St. Patrick's Day Parade Annual Ball. We extend our sincere best wishes for continued success in the many years to come, dated this day of March 2014, and authorized by my signature, affixed here too. Item A, we have a letter from Mr. James Dwyer of Summit Drive, North Branford. On the topic of North Branford Public Works employees, I, as a resident, would like to thank all of the North Branford Public Works Department members publicly for all of their dedicated service and unselfish effort and time to the town of North Branford when dealing with the past hurricanes and snowstorms in the last four years. We have lived in this town for over 37 years now, and we appreciate all of the tremendous hard work that they have done in keeping our town functioning as the best-driving town in the state of Connecticut after several storms, especially the blizzard of 2013. The town is very fortunate to have such a great public works director known as Fran Marola. Under his direction, it appears that his crew members all function as a great team in getting the job well done. North Branford is a great town to live in and drive around, especially in the winter months. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Mr. Jim Dwyer, Summit Drive. Item B, there's a correspondence in our packet from the Board Chair of Education, Mr. Lou Paudenoster. And it's item 10B regarding capital projects. Unless anybody has any discussion or? I believe so, yes, yes.
Just to, I should note, the, the request here, not knowing the full process, the, where the request comes in, you have your budget books this evening that you're getting to take home and digest. Their request is not in there at this point. But, my understanding, as this process unfolds, you'll take and look at, can add back at any point, add to that. So, just so you know, going, when you look at that, you're not going to find any of these numbers in there. In fact, you probably won't find, well, you won't find many items in the capital because we're basically already at 1.5 mil increase before even considering capital increases based on obligations. So, I didn't touch that. I didn't feel it was my, you know, position to do that in terms of capital from a request that it should go to the town council to do that. So, that's, but what you'll see in the budget is all of the numbers except their capital requirement request.
So, the regular budget number is in there as a line item, but the capital numbers are not?
Correct, correct, yeah, just for clarification. So, when you go home and you see, what you see right now, or on the first page, is a 1.44 increase. But, that does not include their capital.
No, that's just for their operating budget, right?
Just their operating.
So, we're looking at a mil and a half just for the BOE operating budget?
No, that's total town. You're talking total.
Total everything.
Total everything.
Everything, everything in but their capital request.
But the capital, okay.
Yeah, 1.44.
Just wanted to get that straight.
Yep.
Well, as we're deliberating on a budget, you'll have that information of the capital items that they want to go in there.
Yeah.
Right, it's, it's listed there.
It's in there, okay.
Yep, yeah, it's on there. Yeah, it was included.
So, we need to prioritize and discuss all the capital projects.
I just didn't feel it was my position to pick and choose which ones go in and so forth, that it would come directly to the council to do that.
Okay. Item C, Correspondence, the ISO rating.
Yeah, that's just, I don't know if you have any questions, but that's in there to let you know that the rating went through. That was, Chief Seward was here to talk about that process.
Right, this was the study done with the fire department.
Right. What I don't know is what, you know, how that translates to, you know, any type of adjustment or decrease with, with respect to insurances that homeowners may, may benefit from.
Right.
And I would have to defer to the chief on that.
Yeah, I don't know if they have gathered all that information yet. At their, one of their meetings, they had discussed that this could affect your homeowners and some other insurances. Okay. Okay. Item 11, Resignations and Appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to accept Christopher Cosi's resignation from the Police Commission and paying for his months of service. He's moving out of town. I'd like to thank him.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item 11B, Appointment of Marie Diamond as liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond as a liaison to the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Epstein.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose? So, usually that's over twenty-five years, most manufacturers warranty that the systems will produce at least, right, no less than eighty percent of the nameplate rating at year twenty-five, right? And, and in many cases, it's, it's even more than that, right? I can point to systems that were installed as far back as nineteen seventy-six, right, in the infancy, I mean, before anybody was doing this other than, you know, NASA, and people setting up satellites. And those systems have been continuous operation and have actually seen little or no degradation in output since they were installed, so.
Are there incentives for commercial properties, as, like there are for residential?
Federal tax credits, and there's a reverse bidding process that comes around once a year in the state of Connecticut. It's pretty, it's a much more convoluted process. So what happens is, once a year, you have an opportunity to bid on the value of a Z-RAC, submit your project. Last year, there were probably three to four times as many projects as there was funding, because there's limited window, limited amount of funding. So, that was very, you know, one out of three, one out of four projects was selected, and, and basically, whoever asks for the least amount of money, incentive money, or, or Z-RAC money, which gets paid out over a fifteen-year period, gets their system funded first, so, the answer is yes, it's a little more difficult. The residential rebates are very straightforward, it's simply comply with the guidelines, send in an application, and get back a rebate reservation letter, you know, within a very short time saying that that rebate money has been set aside.
And then, in the, in what you expect the town to provide, so the person that the town's supposed to provide, how many hours are you expecting this person to work in these nine months?
Actually, there's not much work involved besides taking the progress reports from me, and if I run into a roadblock, sometimes I'll ask for help in Madison, it, it seems like you had to have somebody from their town in order to secure the library or secure the fields. So, it may be a little bit easier for me here, but if, if anything was to be needed, I would have just contacted Mike and, or any other community member here.
So what are the recruited volunteers, like, what are they supposed to do?
Actually, we recruit, recruit everybody, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, we, we get everybody involved to try to help out, spread the word, we'll get them to do some of the marketing, they, they enjoy it, it's not something that we're asking people to do unwillingly. A lot of people actually stand up and, and ask me if they can help out. So it's, it's usually, the community really comes together when you promote clean energy.
Okay, so, if I understand this right, so this runs for nine months from when it starts, and that's what the town builds its free KW system on, they build it. So that, so that just runs, whoever signs up in that nine months is what this program is?
Right.
Okay.
Not only that, but in combination with the free system that we are giving you, you are earning three points per house that signs up for solar. And after a hundred points through the state, you get a bright idea grant. With that bright idea grant, you can combine that with ours, our solar panels that we're giving you, and use them all together, you know, and make a little bit of a bigger system, and this is a trend that can go on and on. It's not something that stops here when I leave, something that we're setting up to get you started, and then you guys go ahead with it in the future.
So, are any of the other towns that have done it, have they completed it, and they have a free system up and running?
Chester had the ribbon cutting ceremony at their Chester Elementary School, but they actually decided to use the bright idea grant first, and put that on the Chester school through our program, so that they can kind of double up on the points. So, we really hadn't put the free system up yet, but we put up their system that they got from the state. Now we're waiting for them to finalize their decision on where their free system is going.
Okay, so then I have a question for you, John, with the town endorsing this, what, what does that do for the liability of the town? So now, I don't know, someone gets electrocuted by the solar system, or, on the solar panels, or somebody's roof leaks, where the town is endorsing this, what does that do to them?
I thought I saw a liability section there.
There is liability section?
Well, not, actually, non-liability.
I could tell you one thing, because this has come up in the past, is that the people actually sign a contract with AEGIS at the time that they're putting the systems up on their house. It, it doesn't fall back onto the town at all, because all of this work is done between the resident and the contractor. Not, and this doesn't make, this isn't, isn't an exclusive club, you can go to any contractor, it just won't add to the points. We're just trying to educate and promote clean energy, and I'm handing you a great price, a contractor that I work with. And to answer your earlier question about who started Connecticut Solar Challenge, I don't work with just AEGIS, I actually work with other solar contractors. So this was formed by energy-conscious people in the community who want to make a difference.
There is a provision on page two, four of one of these documents, limitation of liability. And basically, unless you commit a criminal act, or do something intentional, or reckless or grossly negligent by omission of conduct, neither party is going to be liable to the other party. So, our commitment is to offer them a, a platform to peddle this program, if you will, and we get benefit from it. And the agreement that we're signing with them is one that does not impose any liability on either party.
If you don't mind me asking, sir, how long have you been in business?
Twenty-five years.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing is, just for extra protection, what you might want to do is share this agreement with the, with the town's insurance company, make sure there's no exclusions that they might deem appropriate, I doubt it very much, but that would be something you might want to consider.
I can say that all of the other towns have had their attorneys, you know, vet same exact document, and didn't have any problem, I mean, it's
The solar panel companies.
Simply an educational program that Maggie's running.
The solar panel companies, how stable are they nowadays? Because I know a lot of them go out of business very quickly, or they used to.
Good question, no, still happening, and, you know, I mean, last year, last year.
Warranty is kind of shaky, you know what I mean? These, these panel makers are going out of business, who's going to back the panel?
Sure, absolutely, so, and I have a good answer to that.
Okay.
Not to alarm you, but, you know, last year, I guess there were about eight hundred manufacturers worldwide. Two hundred and sixty-five of them went out of business in one year, that's an awful lot. So, the industry is, is quite.
Volatile.
Volatile, exactly, and a lot of that had to do with, you know, Chinese dumping panels here at low cost, and Chinese government subsidizing panels. Most of that trend has come to an end.
We subsidized a lot of panels still when they went out of business.
Much of that trend has, has come to an end, but really, the reality is that, you know, they're very, very reliable products, right? In the tens of thousands of panels that we've installed over ten years, over, not ten years, but over twenty-five years, I've actually yet to see a panel fail, just pretty good track record.
Yeah, absolutely.
Pretty amazing, right, I can't say that about many other things.
The name Solera sticks in the back of my head.
Solyndra.
So, Solyndra, yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Because it cost us so much money from our federal government, and basically, it went out of business and took our money.
Absolutely, it wa, it wasn't that it wasn't a bad product, it was that they couldn't compete in the market.
It was a bad business decision by our federal government.
Very, very possibly, yeah, but, one of the things that we do as an installer is, you know, I mean, we, we vet all of the equipment that we install, and we back the entire system with a twenty-year warranty, a company warranty. So if the panels fail and the manufacturer's no longer there, then we'll actually pick up the tab and repair or replace the, the panels or the system.
Cool. Do you have these on your home?
I do.
Do you?
Yeah.
How long have you had them?
So I actually have a, I actually have a solar hot water system on my home, not a solar electric system. I have a lot of dormers and trees, and the house unfortunately wasn't actually oriented or designed well for solar electric, but the solar hot water system works very well, so that's another technology that we also work with.
I don't see too much of a downside for the town here, to be honest with you, you know? I don't see why we can't give people the opportunity to do this.
So, if we only have, and I know you said, so, we, we would, let's say that we only get five people to spend twenty-eight thousand dollars in town in the next nine months.
One of the interesting things is, right now, in Connecticut, there really is, there's never been more opportunities, right? The Connecticut, State of Connecticut's come up with a number of different programs that really mean that, that solar can, is affordable to everyone, no matter what you can afford, right? If, if you own your home, but you can't afford to put one dollar out of pocket, you can still put a solar system on your house and actually save money.
Sure.
See, the thing is, with the UI being the most.
CT solar, with a CT solar lease, or CT solar loan programs that are now out and sponsored by the State of Connecticut. It really allows for just about anyone who owns a home to benefit from solar energy.
So my question is, so, I'm still going to stick with, so we get five, if we do well, we get five people to do it in the next nine months, and, you know, maybe you're going to get a whole bunch, but let's say that. So now we've earned a one KW system.
Sure.
Personally, I wouldn't put a hole in the roof for a one KW system, so can we trade that in for like Good and Funny or something, you know?
Mike the liquor child.
Yeah, a, a one KW system is substantial, I mean, if you had to install just a one KW system, you're looking at, right, somewhere close to four thousand dollars, right, just for that one system, one KW, which is a relatively small system.
But again, I wouldn't put the holes in the roof on a town building.
Why not?
We spend most of our time trying to fix holes and leaks on town buildings, so.
So we, we've put millions of holes in roofs over the last twenty-five years, and do you know how many leaks we've had to date?
None.
Zero.
Okay.
Not one.
But you mentioned in your own home, there, is there two different types, like just hot water, like, and then there's electric as well?
Absolutely, the technologies are different.
Right.
One, basically, would, would provide hot water, for domestic hot water, and would eliminate oil consumption or gas consumption. The other technology. The other technology's strictly solar electric, which strictly generates electricity. And the difference really is, you know, I mean, what, solar, electric panels have wires coming from them, solar hot water panels have pipes tubing.
So I guess you'd have to decide on the home, basically, too.
What, what happens is, in many cases, we'll visit a home, we'll look at the orientation, the azimuth, maybe perhaps there's a neighbor's tree that's shading the house for half the day, right? So, in, in those cases, it may not be optimal for solar electric. Solar electric systems take up a much larger footprint area on the roof, and they're much more sensitive to issues like shading, right? Whereas, a smaller roof area that might be partially shaded for part of the day, much less impact on the performance of a solar hot water system. So in many cases, when we go to look at a site, if it may not, it may not be appropriate for solar electric, but it is perfectly appropriate for a solar hot water system.
To get run.
And the benefits are, are just as good.
Right.
With a system like that.
And at the end of the nine months, we.
Yeah, in some cases.
Met our commitment and broken, we break ties with you?
Essentially, yeah. I mean, in some cases, the, the programs have been extended, if, you know, what you'll see is that there'll be sort of stragglers, there's a certain number of people who start to see installations going in around town, and then they'll say, oh, I never even heard of this, you know?
So then it's a possibility at the end of the nine months, you may come say, do you want to do it again?
Or extend it for a month or two to get, you know, or whatever, right, if, if it seems that there's the opportunity.
One of the things that I had noticed is that for part of my program, I'm actually dealing with the elementary educational. If I came here in the summer, and I wasn't able to communicate with the teachers, and then our nine months was up, then I had found in Chester that they keep renewing with us, or keeping it longer, just so I can keep coming back with the kids. And just now, I just got a, another message from Principal Burrell saying, just hold on a little bit longer, because I have one more group that I want you guys to demonstrate with. So there's cases where we extend it, but you don't have to. There's absolutely a way out for both of us at the end of the nine months, and we can go our separate ways. If you wanted more time with us, that's fine, too.
Well, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it, I'll, I'll move the motion for a vote, I'll second.
Moved by Counselor Fucy, seconded by Counselor Esposito.
I just want to thank everybody for their time, and I never publicly spoke on TV, and having to watch it afterwards was really embarrassing. But I just want to, I just want to tell you guys that you guys made me feel at home after I was talking to you for a little while, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for answering all our questions. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Okay, where are we? Okay, item C, Stanley T. William Community Center Exterior Lighting Request.
Yeah, this is the item that you've been discussing, or had, I think you touched upon it, in terms of the Permanent Project Building Committee had the, working on the exterior lot and lighting program, and, and the Permanent Project Building Committee had gone through and looked at what, what was, you know, the plan, and you have a copy of that in terms of the layout, and felt that, well, you know, it looks like ten lights would probably do, but from a cost perspective, you know, eight was planned, so they came back and said basically, well, you know, for an improvement on the school side, I think it's not unreasonable to ask for and/or a request for the Board of Education to cover the cost of two lights. So, that's here before you, if that makes sense, or not, I'm not sure what, how you want to proceed, but I thought I'd put it before you, based on the recommendation from the Permanent Project Building Committee, and I know Rose has been present and, and active in those discussions as well, so I certainly defer to her in terms of the.
Did they go any further with discussing putting the cameras in the lights?
No.
No.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Permanent Project Building Committee regarding the exterior lighting project at STW Community Center, and to have the town manager send a formal request for funding of two of the light fixtures to the superintendent of schools.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fucy, roll call?
Discussion. I thought we just did a spending freeze on stuff, so is this to just move forward and put it in next year's budget?
No, this is part of the grant, this is part of the STEAP grant, the funding from the second STEAP grant, so we have the funds.
The money left over.
So this is part of the, the phase two of the community center, and we have the funding for it.
Okay.
I guess I have two cents I would add, would it be worth it to look at putting the cameras in as part of the security, or not? Is that something they're still going to do, possibly down the road, or?
Um, well, it's my understanding that if the governor does include more money in his budget for another round of security funding, that the grant would have to come from the Board of Edu, they have to write the grant, because it has to come from the Board of Education, so I think that's a discussion we can have with the Communications Committee at our next meeting. Because I don't, I don't think anything has been announced yet on that, so there would still be time.
Right.
On that.
And I also like to note, Al, this is a local company that we're buying these lights from, they, this is a company from North Branford, that's actually making the lights, which I think is important, doing business with a local business. And they also do the cameras as well.
I think they're called PenGlobe, yeah.
Yeah, PenGlobe.
Where, where did we get the cost of, I mean, so, so they were, we're looking at spending fifty thousand dollars, I mean, how much money do you have in the grant?
No, not fifty thousand dollars for.
Five thousand times ten.
Well, in, in total, the, the budget for the exterior, if you will, in terms of the lot, in terms of the redesign, reconfiguration, and pavement, along with lighting, we'd estimate somewhere around two hundred.
Well, that was my next question, we don't have wires or conduit to any of these positions, so we're going to be trenching across the poorly paved parking lot now, which would mean we'll be repaving.
We, we have to repave it, I mean, because they're expanding the parking lot.
It's all together.
That's a part of the budget, too.
Basically, dealing at the same time, right, when we're ripping up the parking lot.
So that's, that's my question, the five thousand per fixture is including getting the wire there and patching the pavement?
Right, yeah, I, yeah, we've accounted, yeah, essentially, yeah.
It wouldn't be patching, because it would be new pavement.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the bases, the conduit, the wiring, plus we've got to go into interior, where we've got discussions, or we'll be talking to Fran, we'll be talking with the electrical engineer or consultant to talk about the panel that needs inside, all, all of those components. It's not just the fixtures, but everything's in there, and so, it's what I call exterior, which is the parking lot and the lights, and everything that goes with it.
Franny, actually, Franny and Kurt Weiss actually are the ones that kind of laid out the parking lot to get us, because we needed more parking spaces. So it's basically, at this point, up to this point, has been an in-house job in laying all of this out. And Franny has obtained quotes from Tilcon for the paving, and his guys have already done preliminary work up there in anticipation of doing it this spring.
We good? Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
New business, discussion in action, item A, the Daniel Cosgrove Animal Shelter Quarterly Report. Donna, what's that? Good evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. I don't have any power. He likes cats, not dogs. Thank you. I got more.
Full service shelter.
Wow, that's a business, seventy-nine point. Can you just step to the microphone so people can hear you, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
No, this is for just North Branford, right?
Just North Branford, yes.
Donna was here at your last meeting, and, and, but I think their meeting, my understanding is your meeting was canceled.
Right, due to the storm.
Right, but as you requested, she'll be a fixture here for a quarterly meeting on the first.
I can come every meeting if you want.
No, no. We really appreciate you coming and doing this, this is the first time we've gotten any information, and it's good to see it.
I kind of hate to ask, but what do you guys do with the dogs that aren't adopted?
Well, they don't put any, but any animals down.
Okay.
They're no-kill shelter, and some of the dogs, unfortunately, have been quite wild, very few. And sometimes, like, especially in particular the pit bulls, they will search the US for places that they may go. And it takes a long time, takes money, but there hasn't been, none of the dogs, none of the pets. It's only in the instant when they're very sick, feeling the chemo, even in the dog that has heartworm, is that okay, do I, can I talk? Even in a dog that has heartworm, they will invest the money to help cure the dog. And it's not the town money that they're using, it's fundraising money. It's, for instance, just last year fiscal year, twelve to thirteen, we were able to raise seventy-seven-plus thousand dollars.
That's awesome.
And according to what Laura has told the, and the rest of us members, is that in the past seven years, they did not have to increase the line item for veterinary care.
Good.
Because of the fundraising that we do.
I know everybody wants to move along and everything, I just have one more question. What's a redeemed dog, that somebody comes and gets it?
When a dog is redeemed, it's the owner.
Okay.
And plus, they have to pay a fee, fifteen-dollar fee, first day, second day, they have to add ten dollars to that.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we can't, if the dog is not spayed or neutered, we can't enforce that. We're big on spay and neuter, all the animals that leave the shelter are spayed and neutered, except the kittens, under six months, because that brings down the population. Unfortunately, people adopt, and they say they're going to, and they don't, but we just, you know, give that assurance to keep down the population. Oh, go ahead.
Nope, I'm all set, thank you very much.
Well, I, can I add something?
Sure.
I, I just want to impress upon you what the shelter has been doing, and just for instance, Feb, January and February, and the beginning of part of March, they're going to be going, and they have gone, March will be Madison, but they, again, they've gone to, they'll be going to Madison, they've been to Ryerson Elementary, Jeffrey Elementary School, and the Seton Group, and Walsh Elementary, and that's to encourage the kids, teach them humane education, which I think is very huge. Five days a week, they have special. And at those events, which I think is another attribute to the shelter, they have a pet food pantry, and they supply about 77 people. They help them with, especially now in our economy. And that's just not North Branford, Branford, but it's also Clinton, Madison, Guilford, with food for their animals.
That's great.
Yeah, so anyways, nothing else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Item B, resolution for the SCROG Regional Performance Incentive Program.
Yeah, as I mentioned, this is really to cover their GIS data service, so you have a information, packet of information in there. And I suspect it's nothing new in terms of the council seeing this in, you know, previous, previous rounds. So they're looking for the endorsement from North Branford.
I'll move the motion.
Second.
I hereby resolve that the North Branford Town Council adopts the proposal submitted by the South Central Regional Council of Government, SCROG, for Regional Performance Incentive Program Grant pursuant to Connecticut General Statute of 4-124-S as amended by Section 251 and 253 of the Public Act 13-247 as presented. The SCROG proposal is for the continued development of regional GIS data services.
Moved by Councilor Fucy.
For the record. I believe it was seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item C, approval of contract with LHS Associates regarding voting machine maintenance agreement.
Right, this is for the registrars for voting machines. You see in the packet the information there that they are no longer going to maintain, that it's, will now flow to the town to do that. And unfortunately, I was, I think it did get transmitted to John, I just, I don't know if he had a chance to thoroughly review that.
I have, and I just have one question again, and that is on the first page, actually it's on page six. So it says term and termination. In paragraph, in number one, term and termination, it lists four different ways that this contract could be terminated for breach or assignment or going bankrupt. And the last one says by either party, upon notice to the other party, within 30 days of expiration of this agreement. Once again, I have looked at this relatively quickly, but I don't see any expiration date in this agreement. The term, you'd think in the first sentence would say that, but it simply says when it's going to begin, it doesn't say when it's going to end.
Well, on, on the bottom of that page, it says 7/1/2014 to 6/30/2015, under Connecticut Maintenance Agreement. So I, I don't know if that's the exact term, but that's the only dates that I see in there.
That could be it. That's a very important term, and I think it should be...
Listed as part of the...
If that, if that in fact is it, if it's a one-year term, that should be in that paragraph prominently.
I'm going to move to table it until we get a clarification that...
I'll second that. Actually, it's on every page at the bottom for some reason.
Right.
I understand, very unusual, but it's a good catch, I would have seen that.
All right.
I just have a question.
Question.
How many voting machines do we have, and what would the cost of this be? Do you know that? What tier are we at, looking at?
I, I think they're looking at the highest tier, Tier One, and I'm trying to, I don't have my notes. We did, I did meet with registrars. Maybe Anthony may know, we're on 13, 13C there.
13C, okay.
The voting machines.
The voting machines, how many machines, I just don't know.
Tier One.
Yeah, Tier One.
Six.
Six voting machines?
Pretty sure.
So it'd be $1,200 a year.
Well, are we currently paying?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Because the state's paying.
The state's on ceiling later.
The state's giving it up and turning it over.
They pass it down to us, and now we've got to pay $1,200.
So how did we get this proposal from LHS Associates?
LHS is the contract that the state's been using all along, and the state's been picking up the tab, so it's kind of like a smooth transition. They've already, they're familiar with the equipment. We bought the cards through them, they programmed the cards previously, they're the preferred event that the state uses. So it's just a natural transition right to them, basically. There's only, I think, two people that play that game in the state, and they're the leader of it, I guess.
Okay. Anthony, one more quick question, sorry. Where you sit down. Have we ever had any of these parts that they're listing here replaced?
Not that we're aware of, no.
Another board, or, you know, none of them?
No, we've got just programming issues and things along that line, replacement cards, programming cards, but never the, the large dollar items that are referenced in there, no.
Because these machines aren't that old, right?
No, about five years old.
Five years old. Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item C, approval of contract with LHS Associates regarding voting machine maintenance agreement.
Right, this is for the registrars for voting machines. You see in the packet the information there that they are no longer going to maintain, that it's, will now flow to the town to do that. And unfortunately, I was, I think it did get transmitted to John, I just, I don't know if he had a chance to thoroughly review that.
I have, and I just have one question again, and that is on the first page, actually it's on page six. So it says term and termination. In paragraph, in number one, term and termination, it lists four different ways that this contract could be terminated for breach or assignment or going bankrupt. And the last one says by either party, upon notice to the other party, within 30 days of expiration of this agreement. Once again, I have looked at this relatively quickly, but I don't see any expiration date in this agreement. The term, you'd think in the first sentence would say that, but it simply says when it's going to begin, it doesn't say when it's going to end.
Well, on, on the bottom of that page, it says 7/1/2014 to 6/30/2015, under Connecticut Maintenance Agreement. So I, I don't know if that's the exact term, but that's the only dates that I see in there.
That could be it. That's a very important term, and I think it should be...
Listed as part of the...
If that, if that in fact is it, if it's a one-year term, that should be in that paragraph prominently.
I'm going to move to table it until we get a clarification that...
I'll second that. Actually, it's on every page at the bottom for some reason.
Right.
I understand, very unusual, but it's a good catch, I would have seen that.
All right.
I just have a question.
Question.
How many voting machines do we have, and what would the cost of this be? Do you know that? What tier are we at, looking at?
I, I think they're looking at the highest tier, Tier One, and I'm trying to, I don't have my notes, we did, I did meet with registrars. Maybe Anthony may know, we're on 13, 13C there.
13C, okay.
The voting machines.
The voting machines, how many machines, I just don't know.
Tier One.
Yeah, Tier One.
Six.
Six voting machines?
Pretty sure.
So it'd be $1,200 a year.
Well, are we currently paying?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Because the state's paying.
The state's on ceiling later.
The state's giving it up and turning it over.
They pass it down to us, and now we've got to pay $1,200.
So how did we get this proposal from LHS Associates?
LHS is the contract that the state's been using all along, and the state's been picking up the tab, so it's kind of like a smooth transition. They've already, they're familiar with the equipment. We bought the cards through them, they programmed the cards previously, they're the preferred event that the state uses. So it's just a natural transition right to them, basically. There's only, I think, two people that play that game in the state, and they're the leader of it, I guess.
Okay. Anthony, one more quick question, sorry. Where you sit down. Have we ever had any of these parts that they're listing here replaced?
Not that we're aware of, no.
Another board, or, you know, none of them?
No, we've got just programming issues and things along that line, replacement cards, programming cards, but never the, the large dollar items that are referenced in there, no.
Because these machines aren't that old, right?
No, about five years old.
Five years old. Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
That was, that was to table it.
To table it, correct. Item D, proposed amendment to ordinance senior tax.
Right, yeah, this is the discussion we had with respect to whether or not the council was going to be comfortable and wanted to up the pot from 75 to, you know, any, anywhere upwards to 100,000, wherever you decide. But the process would be to try to set, set in motion the public hearing and have that coincide with this budget process. So then if you, if it were to go forward, then you'd have a number that you've decided on that you would want to lock in for the upcoming budget. So I didn't want to lose sight of that, and, and that's why this is in here. If you have an appetite, desire to do that as a body, it's here before you, and this is just, I mean, a cut and paste, so you can, I just put in placeholders in terms of dollars. That's certainly prerogative of the council to decide what dollar amounts you want to put in.
I thought at the meeting, the only thing we did was go from the 75,000...
To 100.
To 100.
To 100.
And we didn't touch anything else.
Right.
Right, I mean, but my notes, when I went back to look at, is whether or not, you know, you wanted to change, you know, to, to, to help more people within, to, to apply within the pool, or if you just wanted to move the number up higher, because you can't exceed, as it stands now, you can't exceed $300.
So, so if it came out based on the number of people that applied, if it came out to $305 that each person would get, the way the ordinance is written now, that we would be limited to $300. So that's, I mean...
Well, I was looking at it to help more people, not give fewer people a bigger tax price.
Right. And Christine...
That's why I thought we were clear, we went from the 75,000 to 100,000 and left it the way it was.
Right.
That's right.
No, you're, oh, you're right. And Christine even said that the number of people were increasing that were applying, right?
Right, which would, which could decrease the...
Which could decrease the amount.
Decrease the amount, but in the event that some are disqualified or they don't meet certain requirements, even though they apply, that doesn't necessarily mean that they qualify for it, or it could be a partial.
Right, a partial, yeah.
But if, and there's been years that we've had to, we couldn't give the $300 based on the number of people that applied to it. So by upping the pot, if, when we came out, if it came out over $300, we wouldn't be able to give them that credit. So we could adjust, still keep the 100,000, but it just gives us a little bit of leeway so that...
If it's over 300.
We're not limiting the amount of people that can get it.
Right.
Anybody can get it who qualifies.
Right.
But we just upped the pot that, that we're putting the money into that they can take from.
Right.
But you might have to, you might have to up, instead of the 300, just up that amount so that if, based on the number of people that applied in the pot that you have, if it comes out to a little bit more than 300, you have that flexibility.
Yeah, 300 is the cap.
But you have to change it.
Probably it's not going to happen because so many people are going to apply, I would think, but that's fine.
What's this page one, it says not to exceed 300, and next to it says 500 per property.
That's the proposed change.
That's the change.
I know that, but that's why I want, I want to know why it's in here, if you're not going to do that.
Not my call, I mean, I just, I'm just trying to give you flexibility, if you decide that.
But we have to have a public meeting.
Right.
Public here, right, this just sort of sets the tone, but it also, it, it flows into the other part in terms of Section D. You've had, I don't know, actually, I don't know how long you've had that figured into 42.5 and 52.5, and whether or not you want to look at that as an adjustment. And there, there's just language there, and those are just, I just threw those in there, I mean...
Right, but that doesn't count social security or any of that.
All right, I'm being stupid. We went from 75,000 to 100,000, why do we want to change the numbers?
We don't have to.
Those are just figures.
Why do you guys want to change the numbers? I'm not seeing the point.
It, it's a, it's an application process, so, you know, it's really designed to give you flexibility. You know, if you want, if you're, because you, the unknown is how many people are going to qualify for the program.
Okay.
That's the unknown every year.
Uh-huh.
That's the unknown every year.
That's the unknown every, it's, well, within some certainty, I think Chris has a pretty good feel in terms of what, what, you know, what you want to do. But, you know, again, it was just not knowing what direction, you know, the full body wants to go, if you want to help, you know, raise the, raise the level from 75, 100, I mean, 75,000 to 100,000, and help, and be able to help more people that, because you were cut off at that level, or you were trying to raise the benefit from, say, you know, 300 to 400 or something like that. And then it just, when I looked at the ordinance, you also have the, the qualifying income, which starts this whole process off. So, you know, if you're going to start with taking applications and saying, this is the qualifying bracket, if you will, do you even want to keep that? And I thought, you probably want to look at that as well, and just, you know, just written as...
Mike, did you have a meeting with Roger Monk and the group? Did the group meet, the tax exempt?
Well, we had a meeting, that was, right, and that's, you know, it was his, we did that back in, I think he came, or we had...
Last time he was here, was it last month? He said something about wanting to have another meeting to see if they could do something this year.
Well, he wanted a tax freeze.
Yeah.
He wanted a tax freeze, and he also, their, one of their proposals was to raise the limit up to like $75,000 or something for income.
He wanted apple pie and ice cream.
Yeah, his proposal was submitted in January.
Which was much higher than...
December or January, yeah.
It was much higher than this, their proposal.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah, and it was, right, it was...
And included a lot more things.
No, 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 this was just a...
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing to be held on March 18th, 2014, at 7:30 PM, to hear public comments on proposed ordinance 2014-1 entitled Taxation Chapter 213.
Do we, sorry. I was just, I know you motioned, but for John's input in terms of, if we've got this structurally, if we have this correct, in terms of moving the language, because I presented you with a couple of options there, and you really want to focus on 213...
Well, I think John should look it over, yes.
213-16, dash 16, I believe.
I think, I think John should look it over. It is a proposed ordinance.
Now, when we hold this as a public hearing, though, don't we need to have a set number in every category?
Right.
So, see, all my questions were pertinent.
Well, right, so, no, I guess what I'm asking for clarification in the motion is if you, as a body, are comfortable with just, do you want to do just the 75 to 100,000, and that's it? Or do you want to look at the other...
That's what we have proposed, and that's what I think I want to stick to. I don't know about anybody else, but I think that's what I'd like to stick to.
If that's the motion, and then I guess so it's, I guess it's a reference specifically to section six, 213-16.
Yeah, same change. Yeah, needs to cover the same territory.
Oh, that's the other, that's the others, that goes along with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's mine. Okay. So when would we have to, we would have to have the public hearing on March 18th or April 1st in order to have it effective for the next tax year? Is that what you...
Right, I, yeah, we're setting this up so we can get to, right, to have a, a public hearing for the 18th, come to you for the 1st in terms of, you know, getting the publication and so forth, and then April 1st approval, and that's on the public hearing night, so that you theoretically would have approval and have a number that you could plug into the budget.
Okay, so do we need to, before we set the public hearing, set what we want, make a motion as to what we want to change in the language of the ordinance?
That's what I'm suggesting, in terms of...
Okay, because that's not on here.
Clear in terms of the...
That's not on our proposed motions here. So, we need one motion to set the language, and then, and then a motion to set the public hearing.
The only thing that's going to drive the budget is the $100,000 figure.
Correct.
That's what we would have to budget for.
Correct.
Whether you increase the eligibility or increase the potential award per property.
Correct.
It's going to cap at 100,000, so we'd budget for 100,000.
Right, but to set the public hearing, if we have to change, although, we have to vote on whether we're going to do all those changes before we have the public hearing.
Put the language out there, doesn't mean we have to adopt it. Get public comment, do whatever we think is appropriate.
Oh, yeah.
You just have to, the only other one that talks about the 75 to 100 is that...
213-16.
And so you should just, based on the discussion, I would just eliminate all of other bold printed numbers except for the one going from 75 to 100 in page one, and then 213-16. Basically, everything is up for grabs with the public hearing anyway, and that should be explained to the people there. This is what the council is tentatively putting forward, and is asking for public input, but it doesn't limit any changes being made at that time.
Okay.
As a result of the public hearing.
Okay.
So, in terms of simplifying, and Joe's, you can just simply, as, as proposed, as stated, send it on.
Just at the meeting.
Yeah, make a simple...
We can go to the public hearing with the bold print on two different numbers?
Well, I think, I think that what you bring to the public hearing is what the council is recommending, and you want to hear from the public. And as a result of that discussion, or as a result of that input, you may make a change to the proposed ordinance. But I don't think, I don't think if you have your heart, if you're not presently wanting to change the per amount number, that that should be in there. You've already discussed that. You want to leave everything the same except for the ultimate cap to 100,000. I'm just simply saying, that's what you're presenting to the public to discuss. So I would, I, based on this conversation, I would just put everything back to where it was, current print, except the 75,000 with 100,000 in the bracket. But even, even that, you may hear somebody in the public say, well, I'm a, why do that? Why not increase the 300 to 500? And not have a cap? And you may, as a result of that public hearing, come up with a different change of the ordinance. I think, I think in, at each point in time, we should have something that people are bidding on, in effect.
What'd you guys flavor?
All I wanted to do was boost it up to 100,000 and leave everything the same. So that's just my opinion.
That's what, that's what I thought we were going to do.
That's what I thought we agreed on.
That was the prior discussion.
Should we have time for that council meeting to put this back off? Would that change, would those change, just the regular document?
Or can't we, is it, I mean, just as you outlined, that everything stays the same?
Well, what, what you're saying is that this document, as written, is not what the town council is going to be presenting as the proposed ordinance, that the minutes will reflect that the council is proposing only the change to the total cap from 75,000 to 100,000. And so at the time of the public hearing, that's the, that's the document that will be proposed. And it appears in, appears on page one, and the change appears on 213-16. Other than that, there'll be no changes. And so you just want the town manager to have this document conform to your sentiment at the time of the public hearing. I think that's okay. We all know what we're talking about.
Okay, who wants to make the motion to say that? Drink first. Well, I mean, can we just, we just make, make... Kristen, did you write that? You know what we want.
Yeah, to conform to...
Unless, unless you guys want to vote on what we want. So, we'll make the motion that...
Can't we make the motion to set the public hearing and that the ordinance conforms to increasing the limit on 213-16 to $100,000?
I think that's it.
213...
Dash 16.
213-9 and 213-16 shall reflect total credits from 75,000 to 100,000.
What we're really buying into is the amount of tax relief as a lump sum that we're providing to town, $100,000. So, we really need to get out there, it's $100,000.
Right.
Invite public comment, if people come back and say, $300 is a ridiculous level of debt, we can amend it to whatever we think is appropriate. But the real thing we want to make a decision on is, are we prepared to commit an additional $25,000? The other things, I think, are all secondary. So let's just focus on what we need to deal with.
Right, so it's 213-16 is...
And 213-9.
Well, 213-9, according to our memo here, is eligibility for relief, and it has the income levels.
No, go down. Actually, it's faded, it's 213, oh, on my copy, these are faded, it's actually 213...
It's not clear, but it should be.
It's 213-16.
Oh, okay, so...
In both places.
In both places.
Right.
Oh, and there's another copy upside down at the end, is that...
Right.
Is that replace it or something?
The upside down one at the end is the key.
It's 213...
I think we get it, who's ever doing the minutes?
Hold it like this.
Yeah, it's 213-16, that's it.
Right, okay, that's what I thought.
I thought it was all in the 213-9, because I...
Oh, my God.
Yeah, they were faded. We didn't buy any ink for the print.
Okay, so I'd like to amend the motion to include the wording to, so we're setting the public hearing at March 18th at 7:30 on the proposed ordinance of Taxation Chapter 213, and that the proposed wording is on item 213-16, limitation on credits granted, that the amount gets increased from 75,000 to 100,000.
Second.
Moved by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Fawnen. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnen?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item E, audit report on school grants by Michelle...
Yeah, Michelle couldn't...
Stewart and Mondi.
Michelle couldn't make it for tonight, so I think the council had asked just to keep this on as a regular recurring item until she's ready to report, and hopefully it will be the evening.
Can we just move it up to unfinished business then?
Sure.
There you go.
Okay.
All right. Item 14, citizen statements and petitions.
Hi, my name is Brandy Little, I live on Ulter Pike Road. You are constantly saying there is no communication with the Board of Ed slash superintendent. I think I'm, I think you're confused. The breakdown is here. I want to know, why did the town manager wait until the end of the last meeting to hand out the Board of Ed budget books, which was going, which I am going to assume had some of your answers to the teachers' contract? So I, why did you wait till the end to pass them out, when you knew they were talking about the percentages and everything else, and then after they voted...
This isn't, this is public comment, you're not going to get into a...
I'm not? Okay.
You're not going to get into an exchange.
Then I'll just keep reading then, okay. I know you said you never got answers from the Board of Ed regarding the questions that they submitted. I did ask the Board of Ed about sending the questions, I was told they were sent. So it's your word against theirs. I wanted to know if the town manager, did he forget the email as well? After the vote against the teachers' contract, the books were finally handed out, and I believe it was Mr. Rose that said, oh, if we only had these five minutes earlier. Mr. Candelora, if I'm wrong, correct me, but weren't you at most of the negotiating committee meetings regarding the teachers' contracts? You were the liaison for the town council, and you were there last night until, I'm going to assume approximately 2:00 in the morning when they finalized it? What I'm getting at is, you, didn't you have any of the question, the answers for these questions? You were there, and you were at the meetings, and I'm assuming you were happy with the results, because you didn't go back and say, well, no, maybe we should do this, and then you come to the town council and you vote against it, when you were the liaison with, and, and, and knew all the questions? I could be wrong. Mr. Rose, you made a comment about the superintendent being arrogant at the last meeting, which was totally uncalled for and totally unprofessional. And that's calling the kettle black, isn't it? Don't you think? The town council has made it quite clear with their actions, votes, and comments, that they do not like the Board of Ed or the superintendent. Mr. Caprio, you are here to represent the town of North Branford. You are an embarrassment to this town. The comment you said at the last meeting was disgusting and completely inappropriate, and an embarrassment to the women of this town. I am asking you to resign from your town council position. You are not what I want representing this town. I don't want to hear, it's called freedom of speech, there is, there has to be some code of ethics for people who take these kinds of positions with the comments that you made. No one is saying that you have to love everyone that you deal with, but you have to show them respect. And this town council does not respect the Board of Ed or the superintendent. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Thank you.
And you work for the Board of Ed, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's good.
I'm also a taxpayer.
We all are.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about regionalization.
Yes.
And the changes that are coming on for your COGS, which is Regional Council of Governments.
Yes.
There were 15 of them, and by statute, OPM has to review all these to see if they are working right, if the groups are, are doing what they should be doing, and they've reduced it now to nine. There are nine now councils of governments. What they are doing with this, I am told, is that they want more power placed in these nine hands, or nine groups. More, more of your money that comes into the state will be going through the COGS and not through municipalities. This is what I learned at the last council of government meeting. I noticed when I was looking at the legislative bills, you know, the legislatures in session were all in trouble. There's one here called, it's a raised bill, it's gone through hearing already, and it's called An Act Making Technical Amendments to Certain Statutes Concerning Municipalities and Regional Planning Organizations. Basically, what this is, is abolishing the regional planning agencies, and now making the members of the council of government the regional planning agency. There was another bill that was rather interesting, I thought. It's a Senate bill, it's gone through hearing, and it's called An Act Establishing a New Haven Regional Development Authority. This deals with economic development. And what it says on the end is that the New Haven Region Development Authority will be governed by a body of directors consisting of 13 members, one of which is the chair of the South Central Regional Council of Governments, as long as he is not the chair, or that person is not the chair from New Haven. So these are things that are happening. I know that when I heard the speaker talk from OPM, he did mention funding. I didn't get all of it because I wasn't focusing on that. I do attend your council of government meetings. You must have a representative there at all times, because things are changing. They have now reorganized the committees the council government had, your council government has, because you had some of your committees, which were just paper committees, they didn't meet. They've abolished those, and they're starting to put in others. So you need to get on a committee, because it's important. That's where your money comes from, from the state, from the federal government. They've changed how you can get your transportation money now. It now goes from the federal government to DOT. I don't know how many of you had to deal with DOT, but I have a lot. They're making it so difficult for the towns to get their projects through. The council of government sent two of them through this process. One of them was Guilford, and one was Wallingford. Guilford's got turned down. What happens is that DOT wants a hand in how you do that project. They want to sort of tell you what they think is good and what isn't good. They don't let you make that decision anymore. They make it very difficult. They want you to spend the money upfront, that is your part of this grant. So this is things that you need to be represented at this organization. I don't represent you, but I have to go, because I represent other places, other groups. So I wear a lot of hats, because you know I am your regional representative out there. The other thing that I had, I was at a water meeting. Now, you know, we had the Clean Water Act, it was passed over 40 years ago. But you know what they didn't do? They didn't do the plan. So it's 40 years later, and we discover we have a plan we have to do on how we get this clean water for the state of Connecticut. And the people who are working on it come from the Department of Health, Water Compliance Unit, and the Connecticut Water Works Association, and the legislature. So those three are working on it, they plan to get that plan in place before the end of this session. It affects us, because what do we have in our town? What of our town owned by the water company? In discussion with these people, they have, they're, they're looking at why the three big water companies, which is New Haven, Wallingford, and Meriden, why aren't they connected with each other? So if something goes wrong, that you can go from one to the other. They didn't know why one of these three water companies didn't go over the bridge down in Middletown, to get over to the other side of the river. So these things are what they're looking at. How do we interconnect the big ones to help the rest of the state? So it's something we need to look at and watch what's happening. And I think that's, that's about all the nice news I have for you.
All right, thank you.
I keep the advice, but do have somebody at the next council of government, please.
Okay.
Good evening, the Potter, 1251 Middletown Avenue. Through the miracles of electronics, I got to watch you on my little screen on my smartphone for three hours while I was waiting for the Daytona 500 to start, so I was able to absorb a lot of the information. And Anthony, I have been corresponding all week long. And I want to ask you, how many of you have self-cleaning ovens at home? Where I'm going with this is, why can't we have a self-cleaning town council? When you come in here, wipe your slate clean, lose your attitudes, lose your foul-mouthed language, and do the business of the town with the respect that we as voters deserve. I was very disgusted with the attitude of the council. I realize you had some very, very tough situations to discuss, but I think they could have been discussed a lot more efficiently, not easier, because they weren't easy discussions. You're right, you have no information flow at times. And I, I think if the respect is there, the flow of a proper meeting will be there, and I think you really need to clean up your act, some of you. Respect, very important part of the system. Now, I want to propose the Three Wisemen Amendment. Why cannot the mayor, the town manager, and the superintendent meet once a week? Emails don't seem to work, letters, I don't care what you try. Well, how about if all three of you were in the same room for an hour a week? Couldn't you knock down a lot of these barriers in a hurry? Just a thought, something to start. So if you have something that's going into distress, you don't have to wait three weeks, and then at the last minute, these guys have to make a tough decision. Could we try that? I don't know, I don't see why it wouldn't work. As I discussed in an email with Anthony, when I was Agriculture Commission Chairman, I would go face to face with Anthony. I don't believe in emails. It's a chicken's way out of getting information across. You go to the person, and you know what? We always walked away respecting each other, we didn't always agree, but we felt we had dealt with the problem. dealt with the problem, and, and it never got any further than that. It was taken care of in 10 minutes. I just, I guess I'm old school. Another thing, the information flow, it's terrible. Do you know, I emailed Mr. Amberante, he's in charge of art now, he's, there's nobody for the Naha Bay Register covering North Branford, literally. I have written proof on my email. Oh, well, I didn't know anything happened. Well, yeah, something happened. So, I'm trying to politely from Florida, and I waited till I saw the tape before I made any thoughts or comments. Really, it was, we don't have any information, we're the most misinformed citizens. So, a lot of it falls on you to get us the information as best you can, and Pam, I mean, you're it now. We've lost a patch, the register doesn't even know we're alive, so, I mean, again, if we had information, maybe we could help you somehow. But I feel, I mean, I respect all of you, you're elected officials, you are elected officials in town, in charge of our town, many facets of our town. You have a very tough job, and if you're not given the tools, like Al's a carpenter, what if he's given, instead of a nail gun, a finishing hammer, finishing nail hammer? How, how fast is he going to build? Well, any businessman in here, you're going to do your business better and more efficiently with the proper tools. And until you get the proper tools, which I feel our communications, we're these big three people, I think you could turn this around a little bit. I don't ask you to work miracles, I ask for respect, I ask for you to be respectful of us voters, and I ask you to do the town business in a timely and proper manner. And I applaud you for running for this job, because, Vinny, you own a business, you made that perfectly clear with the tape, and you're trying to get by just like everybody else. Al runs a business, everybody works, you run a business day and night, you know, I know. So, and, so again, you do take time out of your family life and your business life to do this job, but again, I think it could be done just a tad better in the long run with respect, no locker room language, no influences to various cartoon characters and other things, just do the business and respect the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Mr. Mayor, you know, to the public, if there's no one else, I think I'd like to make a statement on.
Sure.
You know, just, there is a lot of misinformation, so the budget books were presented, I left them in my office. That was an oversight on my part that I take responsibility for. However, I think there's a disconnect with the public that your meeting was about an arbitration case and not about a vote on the budget. So, the information you requested for arbitration purposes was a direct request, not digging through a, a budget book. You know, I, every intention to, when I, when I heard and remembered, I went to the office and brought the books. You know, I had every intention to putting that in front of you, but quite frankly, as you all know, it's a bottom line issue. It's one line in the budget that you have control, you don't have line item control, you have bottom line control. I did not see the urgency, you know, until we got into the discussion, you know, to, to send those out, I was going to just, your meeting on Tuesday, put them before you, there's two separate issues here, a budget and a budget book versus a decision on an arbitration case, and I'm not sure the public understands that. But that's what transpired, and it was an oversight on my part in terms, otherwise you would have had it, maybe it would have helped you, I, I don't see how, given the detail that you were looking for in those questions. But, yeah, that was an oversight on my part.
I appreciate that. And again, I understand, I mean, yes, I was the liaison, and I did provide the council with what information I was able to. They work in percentages, not dollars, so some of those questions were about the dollars, and there were certain things that I couldn't discuss from, you know, the negotiation, and that's it. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I moved that we move into executive session. I'll second it.
Moved by Council Fawnin, seconded by Council Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.